Yeah, yeah. 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 Good morning and welcome to the Berry County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 24, 2025. If Commissioner's staff and guests would please stand for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another beautiful day in Berry County. We ask that your hand be with this board and with all our constituents as we work to make our county better, improve the lives of the people that we are elected to serve. In your name we pray. Amen.
Good morning, Pete.
There's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation, God above, indivisible and liberatory, and justice for all. Please be seated. For purposes of attendance, Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Carlton.
Here.
Campbough.
Here.
Getty, Absinthe, Hatfield.
Here.
Smoker.
Here.
Tunison.
Here.
And Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. Are there any state or county officials with us this morning who'd like to give an update to the board? Moving on, limited public comment at this time. Any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for any items listed on our agenda this morning.
Good morning, Rick Moore, Irving Township, continuously the Herbert Master, the Polon Lake Cats Club. And I just want to say that I think it's a wonderful idea for local law enforcement to have cameras, body cameras, because during an experience with law officers that are this tall and have guns and are licensed to kill, people get emotional. Cameras do not. They're simply the best witness you can get, because even eyewitness can make mistakes and confusion. And so I strongly recommend that all officers in Berry County wear body cameras for that reason. It keeps everyone honest. Thank you very much. I'm Rick Moore and I support this message.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Approval of the written... Oops.
Good morning. I'm Sadware, Carlton Township. I'm also the supervisor up in Millville. I'm glad to the body cam stuff. I just want to make sure that you guys understand the importance of it. So for me personally, I'm our tac commander. I'm on the dive team as well as our crash reconstructionist. So I have thirteen, thirteen people that are on my tac team and I have, we have twelve to fifteen divers. So having of body cameras allow us to record coming into the scenes, our interviews, things like that. So I think it's extremely important that you guys make sure that every single one of us has one of those. So.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Approval of the written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration.
Mr. Chair, I would like to ask that we move item nine B, the approval of the contract of the communications, to items for consideration, please.
Okay, we'll move item nine B under items for consideration. Right after item B, we'll make that item C.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request, the agenda is approved as amended. Does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board this morning? Hearing none. Consent agenda, Commissioner Smoker.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of June 10, 2025 Board of Commissioner meeting minutes and approval of a grant submission to MMRMA for the purchase of in-car cameras and body cameras.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smoker, support by Bassett for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Getty's Absinthe, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Presentations this morning, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration, Commissioner Hatfield.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of claims in the amount of $134,602.04.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smoker for approval of claims in the amount of $134,602.04. Discussion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
Getty's Absinthe, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of resolution number 25-18 that would approve a proposal from High Point Community Bank for a three-year installment purchase agreement for the replacement slash upgrade of portable and mobile radios, in-car cameras, and body cameras for the Sheriff's Department.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Bassett for adoption of resolution 25-18 that would approve a proposal from High Point Community Bank for a three-year installment purchase agreement for replacement slash upgrade of portable and mobile radios, in-car cameras and body cameras for the Sheriff's Department. Discussion?
Chair?
Yes, sir.
For clarification for myself, that's actually approving a loan for the cameras which we've moved down into open for discussion, right?
Uh huh.
So is that normal to approve before it's been discussed?
It's a little out of order, but if for some reason we don't approve the purchase, then it becomes an order.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Good question. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Campbough.
Aye.
Getty's Absinthe, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of a contract with Motorola slash Crouch Communications for the replacement slash upgrade of portable and mobile radios, in-car cameras, and body cameras.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Hatfield, support by Smoker for approval of the contract with Motorola Crouch Communications for replacement and upgrade of portable, mobile radios, in-car cameras, and body cameras. Discussion? Commissioner Bassett, leave us off.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify. I had a few questions about how the body cameras will be used in the jail. You know, who will wear them? How are they assigned? Can somebody answer that for me?
Sure. So they'll be assigned to everyone who's on shift working in the facility. They'll be utilized when they go on their counts and in fact they have any activity. So if they respond to an incident, fight, medical, all that. So it'll be activated at that point. So every, every staff, uniformed staff member in the facility will wear them during their shift.
So during shifts, so they, they begin their shift, put it on, at the end of their shift, they take it off?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Are those body cams then shared among?
They will not be. They'll be issued to each employee just for the simple effect of tracking and be able to, so the supervisor won't have to change that person. If they pick up a camera off the charger rack, they have to go in the back and say, okay, Deputy Smith is wearing this today. So when I go to look for Deputy Smith's video footage, I can pull that up and pull it off that camera. So.
So each individual member of your team will then have their own body cam?
Correct. To include transport also, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a further question.
Yeah.
So, so if there's an incident, whether it's medical or whatever's happening, they then, is they're approaching it, activate it?
Yes, yes, they would have to turn it on.
Okay.
Yep. And a policy would be required for them to, to, to activate that in those situations. And supervisor would, would review that and make sure those were turned on. And then I would review that and make sure those were, were being done.
So they are not recording nonstop of all the activities going on? They have to be initiated by the person wearing them?
Correct.
Seems like an interesting way to do it, just because unlike that, that could be...
Right. So I mean, it, it limits, so when you walk through a housing unit, there's people showering, there's people in the stages of undress, those, those things are not going to be, should not be captured on camera unless there's an incident or requires that to be on. So.
Okay.
Further point of clarification, please. So how many people are on shift at a time? So for example, you have twenty-one body cams, twenty-one people, there's five on shift.
Sure.
With whatever.
So, so three, three transport plus up to five staff members on per shift. So seven, eight.
But then how many cameras do?
I think we have twenty-one.
Yes, I got that.
Yes, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Smoker, could you, okay. Additional questions? It's a big purchase. Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion, any questions?
I just had, I don't know if I could ask this question, but Eric, how much was the grant they're going for, for the in-car cameras?
MMRMA is up to $95,000 potentially.
But there's no guarantee. Is that in between there or is that all or none or?
Whether, I can't sit, I would say typically when we've applied and there's been real listing, I think we've gotten them. But you're talking three different grants right now. So I didn't want to say an absolute, we're getting $95,000. That will be, they're due in early July. So that's something I'll be working on over the next week. And on this cycle, then there's another cycle later in the year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Will this put us in line for a discount on our insurance having body cams as well?
I don't believe so. I mean, there's an inherent cost to having staff. They usually, when our pools usually look at this, there's usually, we say X amount per deputy, X amount per certified officer. Now what I think it will do is it'll hopefully mitigate any loss down the road. So any potential lawsuits, if we can say, hey, look, we follow protocol, everything was done correctly, you know, that loss factor, which in the end, fewer losses, our insurance rates don't go up as much.
Okay. Okay. Additional questions from commissioners for Eric? Thank you. We had quite a lengthy discussion on this with a lot of people last week. So is everybody comfortable with this at this point? Mr. Bassett, you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll?
Getty's Absinthe, Hatfield.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Bassett.
Aye.
Carlton.
Aye.
Campbough.
Aye.
And Jackson.
Aye. The motion is approved. Thank you, commissioners. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators' report?
Okay, sir.
Chairperson's report. We have our governance board meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM, but other than that, it'll be a slow week and probably continue to be slow through the Fourth of July. So we'll see. Vice chairperson's report, Commissioner Hatfield.
Well, I'm pleased to share with you that the city, Hastings City Council did approve the basic terms of a 425 agreement with Rutland Township that will allow for sewer and water to the proposed Meyer development. So step one, Township still needs to take similar action, but all indications are that they are also comfortable with the terms that were finally worked out in negotiation between those two parties, with some help from Eric. So thank you very much, Eric. Last night was a very interesting planning and zoning meeting. As I think you're all aware, we're going through a rewrite of all of our zoning ordinances. Not so much to enact changes, although there will be a few changes in the proposal, but mainly to just better organize it and make it more readily understood by anybody that has need of it. So it was a good two-hour discussion last night. More discussion to follow, but we're making progress. Jim McManus is serving as the representative from our consultant. So at least he has good familiarity with the county and the issues that we're dealing with. So.
Fantastic. Okay. Commissioner Campbough?
I did go to CAA last night.
Sorry. I did attend that meeting last night. I've also had a, I guess, a complaint from a constituent pertaining to some planning and zoning issue, and it was the short-term rental issue. And I'm not totally familiar with that. I wasn't even aware that we had that as a county. But the problem I'm finding is that all the neighborhood and everything is fine with this person, but because of an outside source that put in a complaint about this person, who has not had any issues, has not had any police coming out to enforce problems, he's used these rentals for years, now he's being told he cannot. And it, it looks to me like, you know, it could be, you could look at that as selective enforcing because there's like 500 of them in the county that are not being enforced. But because an outside source complains, to me, and I know short-term is a highly, highly talked about issue, but if I have a neighbor that moves in and he's lived there for a year and he's raising all kinds of cane and causing all kinds of problems, that's not a housing issue, that's a legal issue, that's a law enforcement issue. So if somebody's having a big problem with partying or something, as some of them I'm sure do, to me, it's an enforcement, legal issue, not, not an issue that should be penalizing. All these people that bought these houses have, they live on the same lakes, they live next door, they're to their places, and they're renting them out as a source of income. And now we as a county have told them they can no longer do that. So just my two cents, I think it needs looking at. And I'm assuming there's some sort of appeal process that goes with this too, if somebody wants to appeal that. I'm just looking for direction on this. This is the first one I've had.
If you forward me the info, I'll follow up with Jeff for you.
Pardon?
If you forward the info to me, I'll follow up with planning and zoning for you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Dave.
Follow-up question. And what is our policy on short-term rentals? I never, I mean, I've heard there's an issue with this with, you know, people going there to rent a place that, for the week or whatever on a lake and the septic's backed up or something going on, right? I mean, there's been problems in the past, but what is our policy towards this?
I know that's something they were talking about with the new zoning ordinance.
Yeah. I don't think that we have much right now. It's more of a township issue right now.
Okay.
But that is one of the things that will be looked at as part of this total rewrite, but it's one of two sections that's not been completed yet. So we haven't had any opportunity to discuss it yet.
Okay. The, the complaint was put in on ordinance, it's a Berry County ordinance. It is in the zone.
Correct.
I have it right here. And it's ordinance A-12015. And it describes who can be in the house and how long it terms and all that. Basically, family members. You are allowed to have up to four people stay with you for a short period of time in your own home. Okay, not five, four, in your own home. And it basically, it basically eliminates anybody that's for years used a house to rent. This particular person rents them to out-of-staters. He rents them to out-of, out-of-country people. He's done it for years. And now he's been told he can't do that anymore. So to me, there's just something that's not sitting perfectly right here. It doesn't seem fair. They ought to be grandfathered in or something if this thing goes into a different issue or something. It comes up, those people have already spent their life savings to have a livelihood with those houses. And again, if you've got a disturbance, I don't care if it's in a short-term rental, if it's in your neighbor's house, if it's downtown Hastings, it's a law enforcement issue. It's not a housing issue. That's my thought.
I will pass all that on to Jeff and make sure that he gets you all a reply.
I'm gonna say, I think we need some clarification on this because Bruce is right. There's a lot of people that own separate properties on lakes and they run them out by the week. So I mean, we can't be singling out one person.
It's a recreational lake.
Oh, well, yeah, there's very, very hot issues in certain communities and it's been very long, much discussed at the state level and on local levels. I've worked in communities that did nothing, not to regulate them. I know there are a lot of communities that do regulate them. So I believe when I talked to McManus before he retired, that's something that was being discussed and they were looking into or, because I know like some of the, with all the lakes, you know, our lake, there are several on our lake.
Right.
So I will pass that on. And that's definitely something the planning commission would review. And if you have comments, we can make sure they get them as well.
Well, especially if this guy's being singled out, you know, and there's going on countywide. I mean.
I'm sure, like, a lot of things are complaint-driven. Because we don't have staff that just goes out and looks for everything. So when they get a complaint, they follow up on it. But once again, I, without knowing the specifics, I'll make sure Jeff is available to answer those questions.
Yeah. Obviously, it opens the door for me to sting somebody. If I choose to, I just, I call down here, I put in a complaint, now that guy loses his livelihood.
Trust me, I've seen it happen in many issues. So I will pass that on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I know that was being discussed at one of the townships by Gun Lake, but with 300 named lakes in the county, there's a lot of VRBOs, a lot of Airbnb rentals. So.
All over. I mean, there's gotta be hundreds and hundreds of them in this county. Hundreds of them.
And as Eric discussed, they were talking about that. They were talking about overlay zoning and a few other things with that.
Jeff, Chris, or her?
Oh, good.
Good morning.
Well, Jeff. Good morning.
Perfect.
Yeah, we were watching and hearing you guys talking about short-term rental. So last night, we had the planning commission meeting. We had a first draft of the new zoning ordinance presented by Jim McManus of McKenna. And in that, we had a discussion about short-term rental in the new ordinance. And Jim mentioned that McKenna is using as a, as a model, Long...
Long Lake Township.
Long Lake Township.
Traverse area.
Yeah. Long Lake Township in the Grand Traverse County area as a model for the, for this county's upcoming short-term rental ordinance. So yeah, that's, if we want to know, you know, kind of the basic outline of what ours is going to look like, it's going to look like Long Lake Township, which I will start reviewing myself soon, but I haven't had a look. So.
Seems like there would be some common sense driving this where you could, you could require either a permit or a registration. So you know where they're located. And if there are multiple complaints on an ongoing basis for a property, then you can take action. But if there are, if they're good and they know who their renters are, I mean, there's gotta be some level of enforcement. But, you know, whether the county should dive into personal property rights is another thing that has to be considered as well.
Yeah. And enforcing those personal property rights as well. Yeah. I guess the question is there are restrictions on short-term rentals right now? There are. In, in the county, it's as if they don't exist. We're, we're working with a 2008 zoning ordinance. And in 2008, they weren't a thing. So the county doesn't really, we don't regulate them, we don't allow them, and we don't, you know, we, we don't, we don't allow them. So there are two townships in the county that do allow them right now. And that's kind of what Jim was mentioning last night. It would be at a township level where the regulations are laid out and then the county has ultimately, we, we would enforce that. But yeah, it would be at the township level to kind of decide that, what that's going to look like. Is that kind of what you heard as well, Dave?
That's what I heard. I'm trying to interpret what I'm seeing. And, you know, we have an ordinance that defines single family. We, that ordinance is really silent on short-term rentals.
It is.
It refers to defining a family as a group living together, up to four people. It refers to defining a family as a group living together, up to four people, on a non-transient basis.
Correct.
We are now, it appears, trying to say that non-transient would preclude short-term rentals. I don't know how we have ever defined how long somebody has to stay in the house.
When I, when I took over my position, it was defined, defined to me as transient, meaning 90 days or less.
Right.
Or less than 90 days.
And I understand, I understand that.
Is where they, they come up with a transient basis.
We've never codified that.
Right. And, and just to be clear, you're speaking of short-term rentals, and unless it's a problem, and you get, I don't know, I don't even know a fraction of how many short-term rentals are out there. The only ones I know about are the ones that are the problem.
Right.
We don't get involved until we get complaints on it. I mean, there's just no way for us to track where they all are.
One other thing to mention, and we spoke about it last night as well, the zoning ordinance does allow bed and breakfasts right now, and those, if you read the ordinance, they sound an awful lot like a short-term rental, except that the owner is required to be staying on grounds at the same time, which we know is not the case with short-term rentals most often, so. But those, those are already allowed, they sound an awful lot like the short-term rental already. So, my suggestion is, obviously, we're not gonna solve this here tonight, it's definitely--
We are gonna discuss it, though.
We are gonna discuss it, but I was gonna say--
Today.
Well, it's fine, I'm just saying, this is definitely something for the Planning Commission, as they update the zoning ordinance, that we definitely have your concerns.
I've got a complaint right here, second notice, all right? I have no stack of Bibles, I have not had the guy put his hand on it, but he tells me that none of the neighbors are a problem, they all are okay with his being there, the complaint is coming from outside, from a source that's trying to cause harm, and is doing a very good job of it, if that's the case. What I'm saying is, the chairman's idea of it is much better than the zoning's idea of it. Give a person a chance, let them have that chance. If they really are raising cane, if you've got reports to the legal, you've got reports from the sheriff department that you're getting called down there consistently, then there needs to be a look at a way of banning that person from doing it, but not the 500 other ones in the county. And it's not right to single out a person for a complaint. That's selective zoning, that's selective enforcing, why the other 499 do nothing about it. Because I can pick on any one person, I can, I can go right now and make a phone call to zoning and complain about somebody on Crooked Lake, and then they're gonna enforce that person because I have a grudge against that guy. It's not right, it's set up wrong, it needs to be fixed.
And that's why we're addressing it in the new ordinance.
Okay. I'd like to see it addressed before this person ends up in court.
This person needs to call me and talk to me, and we can find out what's going on. The reason they got a second notice is because they won't contact me, they won't explain anything to me. That's the reason they got a second notice.
Maybe his lawyer has suggested that.
Pardon?
Maybe his lawyer has suggested that.
And, again, I don't know. Without any feedback or any contact, I just think I'm being ignored.
Okay.
And I don't single anybody out. If I don't get a complaint, you'll never hear from me. You know what I mean?
Well, you may not call that singling out, but when you have 500 other ones in the county getting away with it, I call it singling out.
How do I know where they're at?
I call it that we need to change that ordinance.
Again, that's why it's being addressed, because we agree it needs to be changed.
This guy's been doing this for years, he has people come in from outside country. We, as a county, we promote tourism, we promote people coming in here and spending their money, and we're trying to shell them out.
We're not trying to argue with you, we're agreeing with you. That's why it's being addressed, because it does need to be changed.
Very good.
So, yeah, no, we're not arguing, we're agreeing.
Okay.
Great, one comment, Mr. Chairman, I could. I know many people who have purchased pieces of crap properties next to them on lakes and everything, and renovated them, and made them better, okay? So, we don't need to be treading lightly on how we're gonna treat people that are doing Airbnbs or whatever, because, like Bruce said, they put a lot of money into these things, and this is a livelihood for them.
Yep.
And we can't be stepping on people's toes that are trying to make things better, okay, and trying to survive.
Again, that's why we're addressing it, because we know it needs to be changed. We're trying to make it better.
Anything else, Commissioner Tunisson, or Commissioner comments?
No.
That was a lively one, so.
I'm good.
I bet. Commissioner Bassett?
Had, last week had Prairieville Township and Gun Lake Improvement Board, they, of course, made their decision on what they're gonna do to the lake. This week, Conservation Board, and of course, tomorrow, our groundbreaking at the Commission on Aging, so.
Commissioner on Aging tomorrow, 3:00 PM. Commissioner Colton?
Joe John and I had transit meeting yesterday, and determined that next--
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next month, I'll be taking transit from Nashville to the meeting.
Nice.
Oh, yeah.
I love that idea.
Yeah, so I can experience it.
Okay, beautiful. Commissioner Smoker?
Had transit yesterday and 911, and airport is tomorrow.
Airport's tomorrow, okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Good input?
Just a reminder, we have a groundbreaking for COA tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, hope you can all, you can all make it, but if you've driven by out there, then you'll want to hurt.
Absolutely. Lemon, public comment at this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes for any item that is on your mind.
Dana Yager, I'm here for the Berry County Medical Control Authority, that's who I'm gonna represent today. That's the overseeing entity of EMS, so Emergency Medical Services in a county. Every county has their own MCA, and I get the pleasure of working with our local EMS folks. I really appreciate the robust EMS conversations that are going on in all our townships, and just a reminder, why do I always get breathless? That it is at the township level that EMS decisions are made. I know that someone came and asked you last week to please fix what's going on, it's really not, that's not how it works, so just a little reminder there. I'm also gonna take this opportunity to brag on some of our EMS providers that we have. A lot of the discussions have to do with the transporting agencies, and that's important. We need to get wheels under patients, right? We need to get them to where they're going. But one of the biggest strengths that we have here in Berry County are our medical first responders who do not transport, so even if there is a concern about the length of time that it takes a transporting agency to get there, there are medical personnel at these patients, I always say bedside, sorry, I'm a nurse, at their side while they're waiting for that. They not only are there providing comfort, providing conversation with the family and getting medical history, but we have worked really hard at Berry County MCA to give them a lot of skills, to make it so that they can do a lot of things. Berry County's MFRs are trained more highly than any group in the state, I would dare say. Some of the things that they can do, they can do epinephrine for allergic reactions, they can do Narcan for overdoses, they can test and treat some diabetic emergencies, which is wonderful, assessment for suspected strokes, so if they're waiting for the ALS unit to get there, to take them to the hospital for their ultimate treatment, they can already tell the incoming agency what their blood sugar is, what their stroke scale is, any medical history or other things that are on board, so that's a huge way to start the treatment of that patient before they even get that transporting agency there. They can do airway management, all the way up to the insertion of an IGEL, which is an extra supraglottic airway, so that's huge. They can get, do CPR, best CPR in the world is done by our medical first responders here in Berry County. They can give aspirin for suspected heart conditions. That is the one tried and true, evidence-based medication for anything having to do with any coronary issues, is getting that aspirin on board, and we can get that on board sooner because we have empowered our MFRs to do that. They can do splints, they can do bleeding control and all sorts of other things, as well as the interpersonal of talking with the family, coordinating everything that's going on with that as well. So, while there's a lot of conversation going on about what's going on with our transporting agencies, I want us to keep in mind that we are very fortunate here in Berry County. We have highly trained medical first responders and, in general, EMS staff and providers that are here to serve all of us, so just a quick little reminder.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Additional public comment? Hearing done. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Bassett?
Yeah, this week, we have our bi-monthly Revitalized Dalton meeting, and that will be Thursday night at 6:30 at the high school at Dalton. We have some exciting news with Revitalized Dalton, the land that was given to us from the Sewer and Water Authority has been sold to a local builder, and then we have some tentative plans for what's gonna happen with that, and it's very exciting that, you know, it's, it's moving along, right? And this is a huge step to have that land in the hands of a developer, and he's actually working with a local young man, recent graduate from Dalton, who are putting together plans, so we're really excited because he is local, he is local contractors, and he's really committed to this community, so we'll be talking a lot about that on Thursday night. Probably will come to this board at some point, because we're talking about a lot of different ways to stack some things so that we can make this housing affordable for people in Dalton. We had a housing facility, or housing feasibility study that was done, and this builder would like to, we identified four areas of need for housing in Dalton, and this builder would like to put all four types of housing in this project, 30 homes and about eight multifamily units, both rental and purchase. But to make these things affordable, he's gonna have to stack some things, like we have the land grant, we'll be looking at TIFs, and most recently, we're looking at Community Land Trust, which is something that's being done in a lot of communities around us, Kalamazoo, Grand Rapids have them, and we're actually working with people in Grand Rapids at The Dwelling Place about what they're doing and how they're keeping housing affordable in Grand Rapids, and seeing if that would be something we could have, not only in Dalton, but Berry County as well. We're working with the Berry County Chamber of Commerce and also the Berry Community Foundation to, you know, we're bringing everything on board in terms of what we could do to make this housing affordable for, for people in Dalton, so really excited about everything that's going on there. That's it, I don't know if you have any questions, but--
Don't forget, M43 is shut down.
Oh, I know. We're hoping to be digging in spring.
Okay.
Okay? That's the, that's the hope, and this builder is, is, takes a lot of initiative and very open to a lot of ideas, so, but some of these ideas for the stacking may take additional time. We also applied for a MISHDA grant, the My Neighborhood Grant, which would give us about 1.5 million in infrastructure, and if we have all these other items in place, it bolsters our ability to do that, and that is where this developer in particular will struggle. Where do you come up with 1.5 million dollars for the roads and the electrical and all that, even though sewer and water's gonna give them some breaks? That's, that's gonna be a lot, and so if we had some of that funding, that would be, you know, greatly helpful, so. At any rate, you'll be hearing about it here, I'm sure.
Wonderful. Good news.
Yeah.
Commissioner Colton? Commissioner Smoker?
Go.
Commissioner Hatfield?
Go.
Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted to congratulate Marcia on that housing, which is so badly needed out there, and you got a beautiful tower to give 'em watch.
Do you like the color? It's not just me, Bruce, this is a grassroots community effort, there are so many people involved in this, and it's wonderful to see, that's why it's moving and it's successful as that town, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Tunisson?
A couple things. I'm recommending on getting behind this, and I know that Clark Brothers will be a great partner down there. He's enthusiastic, gung-ho, young, wants to see it happen, right?
Yeah.
And when he puts his mind to something, he'll figure it out. One other thing, I wanna talk a little bit about the Commission on Aging new building. I think that's a proud moment for all of us. I know John, Commissioner Jackson, Hoot Gibson, all previously wanted this, right? Wanted to figure out a way to get a new Commission on Aging building. Guys, beat your head against the walls to try to figure it out, but when they changed the rules on upper money a little bit, Michael and the new board, a couple years ago, you know, that was a big move, right? To get them, their feet moving, they did a great job of fundraising on their own, and now we're to this point where, you know, two and a half years later, that's gonna happen, and it's a proud moment, I think, for, for everybody coming together and getting it to this point, so. I know I've been super happy that I was on that building committee before it even started, right? I mean, it was just a conception of it, and to see it come to this point now where it's actually gonna happen, no, it's a big deal. There's no reason why we can't figure out the same process going forward with the jail, right? I mean, there was a lot of practicality put into thinking about that Commission on Aging building, lot versus need, getting the price down, being practical, and now we're here, so I'm just super excited about it, and glad to see the dirt moving, so.
It's gonna be a good day tomorrow.
Yeah.
It has been something that we have talked about since I've been a commissioner for 10 years plus now, so it's been one of those things that's been on our radar, so it's good to see something happen like that, but, so I appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll see you guys tomorrow at around 3:00 o'clock, but, and just to wrap up, appreciate our partnership with Motorola, thanks for coming here and answering our questions, and our jail and officers, we're looking forward to providing that additional safety and transparency for our community, for what that's gonna bring. It's a new chapter for Berry County, we know it was a little bit incident-driven off something that happened, and now different stories, we want to eliminate that in our future, so we look forward to this next chapter with our law enforcement, with their protection and security for the county going forward. Appreciate the continued partner with Motorola on a lot of different levels with our towers and a lot of things that have been going on, so there's a lot of work to be done, hopefully the training, and everybody will be locked, stocked, and ready to roll with that stuff, because it sounds like it's quite an upgrade with some of the technology we have, so it's a good discussion, Commissioners, I appreciate your comments, your input, your thoughts. It's expensive, so that's one thing that, as Commissioner Colton pointed out in several years, that that's a, that's a big ask midterm with what we're doing, that I think none of us were excited about, but by the same token, the need is there, the opportunity is there. Eric had a creative way to put some numbers together for us, so we'll look forward to seeing how this is moving forward, and we'll look forward to having our law enforcement show us some of this technology when they're up there, and hopefully, it won't be any of us on the front page of cops, so, you know, we'll see. Anyways, thank you for coming, stay safe with the heat, and have a great day.